Quarter at four thirty, please, Martha, signal us if something changes and you can't hear. Are you okay?
I can hear, I can hear you.
Oh, and we can hear you.
Yes, I just can't see a thing, but I'll fix that. I do this all the time, I'm good.
We will try to follow a sort of like in the picture raise your hand rule, just for talking, just so I can try to facilitate the conversation. So we'll try to do our best with that. I would like to see if there is any agenda changes that we need to make. Does anybody have anything?
No.
And so I just prepared a very brief chairs report. Just number one, I just need to say publicly that I applaud Mary Beth and NOSIT for their quick, I don't know, probably didn't seem quick, but your response to this transition to remote learning for our students, for our families, for our school committee members, and for the general public. It's just the, the communication has been steady. The positiveness around it, you know, from the little parade to celebrate the cafeteria workers to just keeping us up to date on little things that are going on are well appreciated because we do need that positive these days to keep ourselves going. But then in addition, which is from my point of view, the, the structure and the planning that I know has gone into each step and will continue has just been outstanding. So wanted to recognize you guys for that. Again, it's always a joy to be your bosses. So with that said, is there any members that would like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak and only because it actually dovetails exactly what Betsy's saying. I really wanted to know, one of the reasons I requested this meeting was that I wanted to know exactly, mostly from Mary Beth, but from anybody. Why does that happen?
You're getting an echo.
Maybe if we mute, if we all mute except the person speaking, sometimes that helps.
I, I would like to know what we could do to help. Anything we can do to support you guys. I mean, I, I know because I am in education, my son is teaching, he's at home with three small children and teaching online. I know how hard this is and I, I just want to know what we can do to help you guys. Anything at all, you know, deliver food, whatever, you know, I'm serious. Whatever we can do to support you, we're happy to do, I'm happy to do. That was the first thing and think about that. And then the second thing is that I was at that meeting this morning, the Wellfleet Emergency Team Meeting, and I did submit a question to Suzanne Thomas about the buses. When we talked about not having day passes, people coming for the day to White Crest Beach, closing that parking lot, what I wondered is, are we, first of all, is our contract still pending or has it been signed? And if it has not been signed, should we be rethinking this rather than encouraging day trippers to come to the beaches on buses? Just a thought.
Great, and I think we'll just revisit that when we get to that agenda. That'll be a good place to sort of dig into that a little bit. Are there any other members that wish to say something? Jill?
You said it so well, but I also applaud Tom and Mary Beth and of course, the staff and all the support staff for just the stellar job for unprecedented unplanned ways of doing and ways of responding. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much.
Good. All right, anyone else? Okay, then we will go on to Citizen Speak, seeing none present. I will move on to priority business and we will start with Mary Beth's report.
Sure. My report is really just little odds and ends that were not covered in the communication that I have shared with you that have gone out every week. So I just want to talk a little bit about our remote learning and where we are with that. The new guidelines for NOSIT went into effect on May 4th. So every classroom teacher is seeing their student, students at least three times a week. It appears that most of our teachers are seeing their kids every single day. Specialists and Title I are seeing the kids at least two times in person and they're also posting work that encompasses five days. And Mr. Staker is working hard with chorus since we did not have our arts night to have somewhat of a spring concert with our fourth and fifth grade chorus students. So stay tuned for that, he's working very hard. We have loaned twenty iPads to families that did not have a way to connect. When the first week, we had eighteen students who were not responding to emails or phone calls from the classroom teacher. So I have encouraged staff to let me know if anyone has sort of disappeared. And then with those eighteen, I was able to split up that group between myself, Claudia, and Kristen Francis, and we were able to locate those kids. We were able to triage and see what the problem was. Most of the time it was that they had their own personal issues that were going on before their child could log on and be part of the remote learning. Some had some connectivity problems, so we were able to then implore Ariana Bradford and Lisa Holmes to triage, you know, any of the technology problems that were going on. And one person that I really want to celebrate is Claudia Croson. She, for the first six weeks, every single day, brought from our school breakfast and lunch to a particular family of high needs. And we were able to get a laptop for kids from Masons. She was able to get that laptop to them because they did not have a device for their three kids to be able to access special needs and general ed lessons. And she, along with another person from Comcast, it took probably two weeks to get that hookup into their homes. So those children are now connected, they log on every day with their teachers, and it's a huge celebration. So she, the past two weeks, she is just going over once a week to do a health check-in, but she really went above and beyond every single day of bringing food to them and doing a health check. So that was one that I really wanted to sort of underscore the celebration. Our part-time custodians, they returned to work on April 29th. We, I met with Kathy Ferry, Andrew Staker, and our technology teachers to come up with what kind of grade five celebration and graduation we're going to have. Kathy Ferry had spoken to the, to Beth Francis, part owner of the drive-in, and they have been inundated with high school graduations, so they don't want to get into the business of elementary celebrations or graduations. So she respectfully declined our request to have our graduation there. So we have a couple of other things up our sleeves and I'm going to keep those a surprise right now. So I'm meeting with those folks again on Thursday. And we have another staff meeting next Wednesday, the twentieth. Incoming kindergarten, we're still anticipating fourteen. I don't believe we've had the two school choice inquiries yet. And I have had communication with the new families and right now we're working on a brochure that will have usually at our open house, our parent open house for incoming K. Every single staff member that kindergarten will come in contact with over the course of the school year is there to introduce themselves, talk about their role in the elementary setting, provide some strategies for parents to work on with their child prior to coming to kindergarten. So we're doing that in a brochure form. So there will be a little thumbnail picture from our school pictures in September and then there'll be a little blurb about each one of us. So that will be sent out the first week in June along with our kindergarten handbook and our Tools of the Mind Parent brochure. And I think that's it.
Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Doing a great job, really.
Dan, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, one I hate to ask, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm delighted with the positive things that you've said, but I read that there's an awful lot of abuse happening in families because of the special situations now. And I wonder if we're helping with that somehow, we're able to keep a handle on that, if we know if our children are all safe.
We currently, Jen, have one family in DCF Care and I have been in contact with her up to and including yesterday. Things are going well with that family. I've also checked in with Chief Hurley to see if there was anything in terms of they getting calls for domestics that we needed to hear about. So I, you know, the, the lines of communication are open. One of the things when a teacher in this, I haven't had this in a couple of weeks now, when a teacher is concerned that a child was participating and suddenly isn't, that's when one of the three of us start to call and see what we're trying to do. So that's, that's a good way to check in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mary Beth, could you like say a percentage of kids that you think are sort of engaging in like learning, more than just sort of teachers? Do you have any idea?
I would say that we're, we're really up there in like eighty-five, eighty-seven percent, you know, and it could be even more because like I said, people are in and out, you know, depending on what their family situation and the parent's work situation is. I was on grade one today and every single student was there. So I'm joining the meetings too, I have been since we started. And they were really cute, they're eating their breakfast, you know, while they're participating. And Mrs. Ellis did a great job and on that meeting was also Mrs. Cassaba and Mrs. Stachem.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Mary Beth? All right, then Tom, are you ready for us?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, nice to see you. So it seems like it's been a lifetime since we've last met and I'm gonna try and hit some of the highlights all the way back because we missed one meeting. And I certainly, I want to start off in any of these conversations, the work that Sue Murray and our cafeteria workers have done has just been absolutely phenomenal. And I'm tremendously pleased to tell you that on the first day, once we went into this new model, they were serving meals and we are, we are serving over six thousand meals a week. And not only for our, our families, but early on, we got involved with the COAs in terms of elderly people who didn't have, weren't eligible for the Meals on Wheels, but they were homebound. And Sue has picked up, we're serving almost a hundred meals, hot meals, two to three times a week across the district. And it's, you know, you talk about community, it's, it's everyone coming together to try and find ways to help those who need the help. And they have done just a fantastic, fantastic job with that and I appreciate it. I can tell you that for most of us, and, and you know this already, Mary Beth is a leader amongst the elementary principals in terms of the initiatives that we've been able to take on. Very early in the process, we were working in our, in our administrative team throughout the system, the middle school, the high school, and the elementary. And I'd say probably ten days into it, it was pretty clear that we needed to split and, and so now we've been operating with our, all of our elementary principals working together and then middle school, high school. And, and I'm about to bring them back together on a bunch of problems that we need to look at. The, the interesting piece from the very beginning was, and I, you know, I know that you understand this very clearly, is social emotional learning for our kids. And so from day one, that was really the, the theme through the initiative was to make sure we could check in with our kids, understand how things were going and then building on that going forward and then trying to hold on to the work that we had done in the classroom or most recently, so that we didn't lose that much. And, and I think, I, I hope you received, over the few days that we took off in April, the elementary principals together, Patty was with us on this, Grinier and myself. I would say over those four days, we spent probably twenty-five hours working either together or on pieces of that document that we came out with just most recently in terms of moving forward the learning at the elementary level. And I think that the work that the principals did was simply outstanding and it was thoughtful. You received a rather large document, twenty-five pages or so, that was detailing the director from the Commissioner of Education. And we took that document and then made it, we personalized that for our district. And I'm tremendously pleased with the elementary principals. It was, I think, one of the finest pieces of work that we've done in a long time. And so as Mary Beth alluded, we are fully involved in that process of trying to move forward with some new information, new learning, and some focus on the math and ELA standards. But ramping up the idea that every student is seeing their teacher at least three times a week. And that was a, that was a shift, not necessarily in West at all, but in a couple of our buildings, we had to, we had to push that issue to make sure that was happening for kids. I would say that probably on a weekly basis, I have eight to nine regularly scheduled meetings. And who would that be? It would be with the Commissioner of Education, with our Association of Superintendents doing work together. I'm involved with the Cape Wides Superintendents every Wednesday, ten AM. We go in typically for a couple of hours, sharing and discussing what's happening in districts across the Cape and, and the state. And then there are the individual meetings that, that come up throughout each and every day. Mary Beth can tell you very well that, you know, spending seven, eight hours on the screen is difficult to get used to. It's, and it gets tiring, quite, quite honestly. And a couple of comments that I would share to the experience is that, and there are two things that are for sure, if I think I have an answer for tomorrow, I better wait until I get to tomorrow because it could change. And things are changing very, very fast and, and at times, we don't even know what, who's changing them. It could be the Commissioner, it could be the Governor, but we have to react to those sort of issues. So I'm going through a few highlighted areas and I'm, I'm trying to keep this somewhat brief so I don't go on forever. I'm pleased to tell you that we continued our work with replacing Ann Coretti, Dr. Coretti. And we were led by Carol Foggione with an outstanding committee of, of staff members in various schools and administrators. And so we have been at that for three or four weeks. Last, last week, the committee brought two names to me and I spent two days, not full days, interviewing each of the candidates. And we ended up choosing Mary Buchanan and she is from Cohasset. And she was the number one choice of the committee, although I wasn't bound by that. And I spent a great deal of time looking at references and communicating with references. And I, I believe we've got a very, very good candidate. I'll be honest with you, Ann, Ann has been a fixture in this district for twenty-plus years and she is tremendously difficult to replace. But I think Mary will be doing an excellent job for us and I have confidence that she'll be able to pick it up. Ann has reached out and she'll be working on many occasions with Mary to make sure that she's prepared for the first day she starts. So there's Ann continuing to do that great work for us right to the end for the district. So that's in place. I, I focused on, one of the projects that I'm focused on is what happens relative to the student learning and are there gaps? And if, if you haven't thought of it in this, in the timeframe, it's almost one-third of the school year. And when we finish up at the end of the, end of, end of the school year this year. And I am particularly concerned that, and as part of our plan, we hope to do some assessment at the elementary level relative to understanding what they've been able to retain and hold on to and what, what gaps are there that we need to consider. And so I have been focused on summer school of some nature. And, and, and again, we have to watch very closely to what each town is doing relative to its recreation programs, our accessibility to the building and working with students. But I think it's a, it's, it's very, very possible that a number of our teachers, because they won't be anywhere near the summer work that they once could anticipate, might very well be interested in tutoring and I'm, I'm looking to do it at grade levels. So we would have somebody for math at, at the third grade level that have some, has some background in understanding the gap and working on a humane schedule during the summer for a student and seeing if we can pick this up. And I just got off the phone before this meeting, talking with the town manager and, and Brewster and he's, he's all aboard with this hybrid model that I'm talking about. So we'll see, we'll see if we can make this happen across our district and, and help kids to be prepared going into it. I, I must tell you that I'm spending a lot of time understanding how we get back into school and what, what factors will be coming forward. We have not got any direct direction from either the Governor or the Commissioner at this point of education and we'll wait for that, that's critical. And I have put out in one of my communications, my desire to have a task force, more than likely for each of the four towns because they're unique and they, they're, the health agents have a huge piece in what can happen going forward. And, and so I put something out in one of my, my communications a couple of weeks ago about, I'm looking for a few parents who might be interested in, in working on this and I have eighty-one parents to this point who have volunteered. I'm overwhelmed by it, I'm not sure what, you know, typically you, you hope to get three or four or five parents to volunteer and it goes to show you the interest and the concern parents have about what will be the learning environment that I send my kids back to eventually too. So that's, that's been a really interesting project for me to work on. Mort, I can tell you that we're going to, Ann is gonna try and set up one of these meetings for our negotiating team next week. At a time that's gonna work for the, the group and we're gonna get back together and have a conversation.
Okay.
Just like we're doing now.
Right.
And one of the options could be the possibility of looking at settling a one-year COLA and, and putting off those big items until the first of September, just get back together and get after them. So that's, we'll have that conversation as a group.
I'm ready.
Okay, I know you are, you're, you're always there, I appreciate that. So contracts are an issue, I can tell you along the area of contracts, I have been doing some work, I'm, I'm now meeting with the union leadership every Tuesday at eight-thirty and today we were two and a half hours in our, in our meeting, Ann, Mark and I. And to look at a number of issues, one of the issues we've been working on is stipends. And we don't see anywhere near the stipends at the middle, at the, at the elementary level, but the spring sports stipends alone, if you throw in transportation, some other things can be, can be close to two-hundred thousand dollars. So we've been looking at the fairness of, they barely got started in terms of even getting the sport to begin and we're looking at what would be a fair stipend for just those couple of weeks and then the rest of it, we're not, at this point, we're not going to pay. We think that the communities expect people to be paid for work that's been done and if the work didn't happen and no fault of anyone's, then we'll adjust those stipends accordingly. And I'm looking at the entire system and at this point, I have the, I had the union support on that, that first piece of work on the athletic programs and so forth. And now I have the support on every stipend in terms of looking at it from that point. If people have done the work, we're glad to pay them. If, if it didn't happen, then we'll be looking at the possibility of not paying it at this point. So that's a big project and, and I was surprised when I got the printout of the pages of stipends and it's maybe something we gotta talk about negotiating in the future because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I, I just, I just heard Mary Beth talking about the health office and graduation and things like that, that's an issue in all of our communities of what we're doing. And I can tell you at this point that I've spent quite a bit of time working with the high school, they are going to have their, their, their celebration of graduation and it's going to be on June seven and it's gonna be at eight-thirty PM and it's gonna be at the Wellfleet Drive-In. And so their plan is to have, have all the speeches, the kids will, you know, they'll all be taped and so they're gonna take them through this celebration and they have some other things planned around it. And even the idea of Megan Trainer possibly addressing the, the student body, the seniors. So we'll see, but that's, that's a lock-in and the Wellfleet Drive-In is, is popular. I talked with Bob Samboyne this afternoon and he's following in and he's gonna bring his graduation up there and I've heard DY is interested in it so. Could be pretty, it could be the new graduation center for, for high schools going forward. I guess the other piece is that I want you to know from an evaluation standpoint, that's an interesting subject as well, is that, and this is pretty consistent across the entire Cape and, and that's as far as we've researched, but the general consensus has been to roll over the evaluation system. And so if, if Mort, you're on the screen with me right now, if Mort was a teacher and involved in the improvement, the, the evaluation program, he would just continue his work, it would roll into next year and we would keep the evidence of, of his goals and so forth and he would finish up towards the spring of next year on that project. So everybody basically rolls over and the interesting thing is that we do not have any, any situations where we're letting people go at our desire. So we don't have that problem to deal with. And so that's, that's the thinking right now and we'll be trying to finalize that. Of course, that has a lot of, lot to do with the union and, and questions on that. In my own personal case, I had, I met recently with Chris, who is the Chair of the Region, and Gail Brer. And I, I said, Gail was a leading force in this conversation, but we were discussing the possibility of me adjusting, continuing to work on my goals, but to add two brand-new goals to work on immediately around the remote learning question. And because I think that we have, we have learned a great deal about this process. I think that we have had a large number of successes and we have things that we have to look at to get even better with this program going forward. And so I'm, one of my goals is to do a total analysis of this process from that lens in terms of what has gone well and what do we need to do to improve going forward. And I'll be working through this time period into the summer and at one of our meetings over that period of time, I'll be reporting out on those two goals and they'll tie in with the standards from the evaluation. And because I'm not And because I'm not sure what's going to happen, and I don't think any of us are, and I must tell you, the fear that I have going into a new school year is that parents are going to be hesitant to think about sending their kids to school.
Right.
So we have a somewhat of a robust number of kids staying out, but we also have kids in the system. And the idea of teaching two models would be really taxing to our, our system, and so we're watching this very closely. And, and I think it, it truly has a lot to do with what are the standards that we're going to have in place to open schools back up in the fall. And, and it, it's something that the entire country is watching right now, in terms of how do we open up businesses and things like that. Except, in this case, with so many schools shut down in the country, they're not, it's not quite as urgent as, as the business world right now. But I could make a case, we need to know now, because we need to study this, and we need to, to look at our facilities, to the guidelines that our community is comfortable sending their kids back to, and the state is recommending. So that's going to be, that's going to be a lot of work all the way to day one, and I, and I, and I hope we, we, we find the answers. And the school improvement plan, I plan to roll that over into the next year, although Martha and, and our committee has worked very, very hard on the strategic plan. It is, she might be speaking to it, I think maybe later, if she, she wants to, and relative to moving forward with a, a finished strategic plan that, that is now getting some type of look at in terms of the situation we're in with this virus. And so that, that gives you a, a somewhat of a feel of where we're at at this point, and, and what we're working on. And I guess I just want to finish, I'm talking to the Princes almost daily, and, and Mary Beth is, I know you're proud of her, I, I'm not trying to go over the edge on this one, but she has kept me posted on a couple of students, of every move they're making to engage that student, and going to the house, and, and providing opportunities with technology, and then some. And that's the beauty of, that's the beauty of Wellfleet. And, and Mary Beth, thank you for just an incredible job of leadership, and.
Thank you, it's been a team, really fast, thank you.
So that's, I hope that gives you some insight into what's happening.
Tom, I think your job has gotten ten times as hard as it used to be, I'm just admiring the way you've handled all this, with the elections on, on top of it all.
Well, thank you very much, Mort, I appreciate it. Well, we're working hard, that's for sure.
Any other questions, comments to follow up? Jill?
Yes, Tom, when you think about the hybrid summer school, if you will, will that be virtual, you think, or physical?
So it's all going to depend on, on what happens in each of the towns. If a town were to say that we're not going to allow kids, number one, recreation, there's a question of whether recreation, I, I think the governor, I was told by the town manager in Brewster just a half hour ago, that there, there's a lot of pressure on the governor to make, make some statement on recreation, because people have to work, and, and childcare is a huge issue. And so he, he thinks that we're going to get some type of direction from the governor within a week to ten days, and then that will set in motion what happens. Then you've got to look at each town in terms of how they're handling all kinds of recreational issues in their towns, from their beaches, to the programs that they're willing to offer or not offer. And so I'm not afraid to go out, just, we're going to have an academic program that's, that's reasonable if I don't have recreation, I just got to know that I can use a physical property in, in that, in that community, i.e. using the school. Because in some cases, the towns are making different decisions, and, and, and example, I don't know if you're aware of it, but when we did the parade for the cafeteria workers, we only did it in three of the four towns, we didn't, Brewster would not allow us to have the, the parade for the, the workers. So I'm learning through this to be, be cautious in terms of making sure that I've touched the bases with all of the people that have some say in the decision, but I'm, I'm open to a number of possibilities, Jill, on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on then to bus parking. I mean, I can start this out by saying, I, I did email Suzanne, and have not heard back, so I don't know if Tom or Martha want to take it from there.
So I'll jump in, and then Martha, if you want to take, I haven't heard, through this whole process, I've never had any, she's never had any communication with me, so.
Well, I watched the, zoomed in on that selectmen's meeting, and it was clear they don't want daytrippers here, they're closing off part of the parking lot to keep them. So I don't like the idea of those buses coming in here, and dropping people off at the pond or someplace, and then parking at our school. In other words, it would seem that we're encouraging the, the, the number of daytrippers to come. So if the contract hasn't been signed, I'd vote against it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to make that clear too, I didn't, I have not signed a contract. She was going to email me one, and I never heard back. When things started closing down, I emailed and just got an auto reply, so nothing has been signed by us.
Except that in the selectmen's meeting, she was adamant that she does not want daytrippers here. I mean, she was the most strong spokesman for that position, so these buses would encourage more daytrippers anyway.
Right. Martha?
Not getting her.
I'm using a regular computer with a touchpad, with a mouse, and I'm not used to that, so I keep poking my computer, I'm an idiot. Courtney, you were at the meeting today, I submitted that question to Suzanne, and what I understood her to say was that she had to talk to town, town, to the lawyer, town council, and that she didn't think we could get out of the contract, which confuses me, since we haven't signed anything. And I might have misunderstood her, but that's what I thought she was saying. She doesn't seem to, she wants to continue having the buses there, was my understanding. I'm not sure, Courtney, you were there.
Yeah. Speak. Martha, that's, that's, I was confused as well, I, I've been confused a little bit on the whole process with the buses, all I have continued to hear is that the contract is on hold, whatever that means. I know today she said, you know, we can't keep them from driving on the public roads, but we can certainly, you know, if the contract doesn't go through, then they wouldn't be able to park. So I, I agree with you that it is very contrary to close the day parking lot at Whitecrest, and then allow the drop-off of people on the buses. I know that she was trying to communicate with the bus companies to figure out what their plans are, you know, are they going to be allowing that same amount of people onto their buses, what are their protocols and things like that? So I, I haven't heard anything else really, I am on the emergency management team with the department heads, and I have not heard anything further on the bus situation. And as you know, tonight, the Select Board will be voting to simply move the start of the summer season up from the third Saturday in June to May 20th, and allowing only resident stickers to the beaches until June 15th. So I don't know how that discussion will go, I, I don't really know what the outcome of that will be, but that is her recommendation. But I agree that it is very contrary to close Whitecrest to parking, to day parking, and then also allow the buses. So I can try and communicate to her that the school is wondering what will happen, and see if I can push a bit of a response on her end to you all.
I'm just wondering out loud here, perhaps we need to make a statement of some sort, I mean, I'm just thinking even back to Mary Beth, you might remember, in the paper, an individual wrote an op-ed, or whatever, a commentary, an opinion piece, not appreciating our efforts even without the school closed, school building closing. So I'm wondering if there's some way we can release a statement that says that, you know, in lieu of no contract signed, that we are, we're not interested. I mean, I feel like we're not really in an agreement, we had discussions, we never even saw the final contract. Even at our last meeting, she still only had a draft, kind of, or, or it was a very verbal kind of a agreement, which at the time was fine, because, you know, we were only going with the pilot, the, the buses that we knew, and however, I'm just wondering, is there a way for us to make a statement, and who might we send it to? But I just wouldn't want this to go wild in the media, I would like to try to get out in front of it, if possible.
Yeah, but I would recommend writing, writing a statement to the Board of Selectmen, and that, that email will also go to Dan, or myself, and Mike Travato, the Assistant Town Administrator, we're all on that BOs@wellfleet-ma.gov email. We've, we've similarly asked the Chamber of Commerce Board to put out their own statement to the Board of Selectmen as well, saying, you know, as a business group, we're also concerned about things. So you completely have the right, and I would take the opportunity to make a statement for yourselves, and let them know your position on this.
Okay.
Well.
I wanted to call on Jan next, because her hand was up.
Yeah, because I have no, no answers, but what I'm wondering, if the, the problem that Suzanne may be facing is, A, that she sort of promised that she was going to work this out, so that may be what she meant about not being able to pull back, even though things aren't signed. And I think what the crux of the problem is, and we can not approve or whatever, but if the bus companies go forward with bringing people to our town, the same problem exists for the town that has been driving this process that Suzanne has been working on, to find a place to put the buses. And so I think it really depends, again, on discouraging those buses from ever coming, but if they are coming, they have to go somewhere.
But that doesn't mean we have to take them.
Well, we were trying to help the town out. So how do we help the town out? By then saying, tough, now we don't like it, so you put them someplace else. I, you know, I don't like the idea, but I think it's a bigger issue than what you're just saying, no, we don't like it, you know? Anyway.
Okay, thank you, Jan, let's hear from Jill.
I agree that we should make a statement, just thinking out loud, number one, I think I heard probably a good idea to get a town council opinion, you know, for, for sound, you know, what do we do, how do we get out of this? I believe we're all in agreement that we're very concerned for various reasons, that now the situation has changed, this is not a good idea right now, right now, we're not putting a big X on this forever. Just like I heard Tom use the word "roll over," we'd like to roll this over for maybe next summer, but right now, we are concerned about the health and safety of the community, and we want to be congruent on good practice. So, yes. But, but again, we want to support the town, and, but right now, it appears that this would not be in the best interest of the community, health and safety.
Okay.
And it's a council opinion, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting. I'm, I'm going to go Mort, then I'm going to go Martha, okay?
Just remember that she asked us to do this before there was any, any of this had happened. I'm sure she doesn't want it now, because she says over and over again at the selectmen's meeting, she does not want daytrippers in this town. So I don't think we have any problem, I think we should write a letter saying why we don't want it, want it to happen. If we're supporting the town, if we say we don't want this.
I agree, the, the contract was almost, but not quite, ready to be signed at our last meeting, which was in March, it was a totally different picture. And I do think that the most important thing, and I'm going to be saying this about everything for two years, because I don't think this is going to end for two years, sadly. I think the most important thing is for the safety of our community, and I think allowing buses to come and park sends a message out to the community about how the school cares about the community. I just don't, I, I just don't want, I can't support it. I don't think we need to talk to town council, because we don't have a signed contract. But I do think we should send, I, Courtney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we should send Suzanne the letter as well, directly to her, I think that's only fair.
And, and worded to, that Suzanne, we're supporting your effort to keep, prevent daytrippers here. It's not, we're not being bad guys here, we're supporting her, what she wants.
Yes, so after listening, after listening to the conversation, I just took down notes, I will obviously craft something that you guys will see, and we can wordsmith, but, you know, the points I think that we've made is that we still continue to work with Suzanne to support.
Her efforts.
The health and safety needs of our community during this time. I'll, I'll throw something in there about daytrippers, or, but I think what I got, rolling over, I, I got a bunch of words there, and I've got, you know, some ideas, so I'll throw together something, and I'll, I'll put it out to you guys. And then, just Courtney, just a matter of protocol, do I send it to Board of Selectmen first, and CC everybody else? Or would I send it to Suzanne and CC? Like, what would be?
You can definitely send it to Suzanne and CC the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And if you send it to the email address, BOs@wellfleet-ma.gov, that's like a listserv, and it goes to all five Select Board members, Dan, Mike, and myself, so we'll all get it.
Okay, let me just correct, confirm that, BOs@wellfleet.m a, or a mass?
Dash. M a.
Oh, so wellfleet-ma.gov?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so anything else on this topic that anybody wants to throw in, any more ideas for the wording or anything?
They could park in front of Martha's house, they have a lot of room there, right, Martha?
Because we only have one car right now.
That's right.
And we're still married.
Okay, I'm going to move us along to the FY20 budget review, Giovanna, hi.
Hi. Hi, thank you, let's go directly to page eight of the report, please. So the last time that we had a meeting back in March, we had a balance of $9,243. Since that reporting, we've been able to put back into the budget $33,378, leaving a balance of $42,621. We encumbered all of the money that was earmarked for substitutes, we also looked at the utilities, we were able to uncover some more funds in utilities. We did not qualify for extraordinary relief, so what we were expecting didn't come to fruition because of the remote learning. We were also going to, because the balance was so low in the operating budget, we were going to utilize funds from the building use account, so we don't have to do that now, it's not necessary. We're also going to use some money in school choice, which is not necessary either. We do have certain break-up funds available to us that we need to spend in fiscal 20, or we will lose them, so I will discuss with Mary Beth on how to spend those dollars. So the last time that we had a meeting, uh, back in March, we had a balance of ninety-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Since that reporting, we've been able to put back into the budget thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, leaving a balance of forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. We encumbered all of the money that was earmarked for substitutes. We also looked at the utilities. We were able to uncover some more funds in utilities. Um, we did not qualify for extraordinary relief. Uh, so what we were expecting didn't come to fruition because of the, uh, remote learning. Uh, we were also going to, uh, because of the balance was so low in the operating budget, we were going to utilize, uh, funds from the building use account. So we don't have to do that now. It's not necessary. We're also going to, uh, use some money in school choice, which is not necessary either. Um, we do have certain break-up funds available to us that we need to spend in fiscal twenty, or we will lose them. So I will discuss with Mary Beth on how to spend those dollars. Um, I will highlight the items, um, in the, in the report that, um, are over a thousand dollars. There was movement of over a thousand dollars, um, just so you get an idea of, um, items that, um, helped put the, a budget in a positive, uh, position, um, more so than last month's reporting. So starting on page one, toward the middle of the page, line of four zero zero six, the salaries secretary, we were able to put back into the budget thirty-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, and that's due to, um, expenses that were not incurred for these, um, subcaller, as well as, um, any perfect attendance, uh, being put back into the, um, budget. Further down on that same page, line of four zero one four, the salaries teachers, uh, we were able to put back into the budget twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and that's due to an unpaid leave of absence. Moving on to page two, at the top of the page, we have the, um, line of four zero one eight, the substitutes long term. Here, we encumbered an additional eighty-four-hundred-and-forty dollars, uh, due to long-term teacher absences. Um, four oh six nine, the special needs substitutes long term. Here, we were able to put back fifty-eight-hundred-and-two dollars back into the budget because the teacher, uh, returned. The next section is all of the substitute line items. Um, here, in, in totality, we're able to put back into the budget sixty-seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Moving on to page three, the top of the page, line of four zero two three, the substitutes professional development, same thing here. We unencumbered these funds, uh, so we put back twenty-five-hundred-and-twenty dollars back into the budget. Moving on to page five, towards the bottom of the page, line of four zero seven five, the salaries cafeteria, we spent, or encumbered twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, and that's, um, additional costs, um, as a result of the COVID-19 meal preparation salary costs. Moving on to page six, um, the top of the page, line four zero four nine, the substitute custodian. Um, here, we unencumbered these funds and we put back seventeen-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars into the budget. The next line item, the four oh five zero, the overtime custodial, um, we spent, or encumbered sixteen-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and that's for additional, um, coverage during the, uh, closure, and that's all part of the contract language. The next line item, four zero six oh, is a fuel oil. We still have twenty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars encumbered for fuel. Um, so we'll have some additional savings here, um, prior to the end of the year. So we usually cap out the, um, the fuel oil, uh, tank. Um, so I'm anticipating some additional dollars here.
Yeah, buy oil, buy oil right now.
Well, actually, the contract that we signed, um, for next year, um, the oil will be at a dollar and eighteen cents a gallon.
Wow.
It's much cheaper next year.
Amazing.
Nice.
And that's all based, that's all based on, you know, supply and demand. There is no demand right now.
Exactly.
Uh, the electrical, um, the next line item, four zero six two, we, uh, looked at where we are and projected out. We were able to put back another fifty-five-hundred dollars into the bottom line of the budget.
Good.
And finally, on the last page, at the top of the page, four zero nine eight, the special needs tuition collaborative, uh, we, um, spent, um, an additional twenty-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, um, and that was, since that last month's reporting, and that was based on the student, uh, need, um, for their, um, services. So that's my report. Any questions?
I like pluses.
Definitely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Giovanna.
You're welcome. I guess I do have a question. How are we, how are we funding next year's budget with no town meetings? How does that work? Do we have to borrow money? Um, I mean, literally, since we're not meeting in Wellfleet until October to pass a budget, and July first is the time when the new budget goes into practice. Courtney, you gonna speak up about what we do? How we fund this? I'm curious.
Yeah, we're all kind of curious. Um, so the, right now, um, the actual way that having the town meeting after June thirtieth works is that we can only do that if the governor does not lift his state of emergency. If he lifts his state of emergency on Friday, we have to whip the town meeting together by June thirtieth. Now, after watching Governor Baker and kind of getting a feel for the way he's moving in this, I don't see him lifting the state of emergency.
I don't.
We're all keeping our, you know, we're not really holding our breath on anything. We think we're still gonna have it in October. Um, but then what happens is after June thirtieth, you are allowed to work from one twelfth, one twelfth of your prior year's budget each month. That's what towns are supposed to be doing. So we're waiting on some more guidance in terms of how to hold town meetings. Um, a lot of, uh, the latest bill that came out of the Senate was basically just to help representative town meetings go to a virtual format. Um, and you know, in Wellfleet, we're open town government, um, so no provisions have really been given for us yet. So hopefully, um, as things move along, and we get some more guidance on how we should operate town meeting, um, but in terms of budget, it'll be one twelfth of the prior year's.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, we'll move on to up, uh, playground update. Um, Mary Beth?
Hello. Well, with the school closure, we did not have our meeting, nor did I collect any more than twenty-nine surveys that were due on April tenth. So that is suspended, um, at this point. Uh, we did send, uh, surveys down to Town Hall, to the marketplace, into the library. And, uh, again, I only collected until we, I've been in the building a few times, and there haven't been any more. So twenty-nine total at this point.
Questions for Mary Beth? I mean, I guess it's just sort of on hold. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll just hold on to that then. All right. Um, so now we're on, um, reports and information, Cape Cod Collaborative. Jill?
What?
Left out.
I'm sorry, I missed E. I'm sorry.
What?
School member vacancy. Sorry about that.
Should I go put my head down?
Uh, can you duck?
Should I leave the room for a while?
Unless you wanna run for school committee, Mort.
When will Mort's term technically be over now with?
Well, the election is until somewhere in mid-June, so until then, I'm still.
I think so.
I'm still your problem.
Yeah. That's what I figured.
Yeah, you're still running until the election happens, June fifteenth.
Yeah.
You're our favorite problem, Mort.
Okay.
Um, so I wanna call on Martha because she asked for this agenda item.
There. Um, what I really would love is to hear, um, from Mary Beth about any people that she thought would be good. You know the community better than any of us. Um, I'm wondering, do you have any thoughts?
I have put out so many feelers and put it in the hands of some of the parents to see if they could rally anyone, especially of our youngest students, so that we'd have longevity with somebody. And nothing has come forward at this point.
Okay.
I, I, um, I think who would be great is Kristy O'Campbell. You know, you all know her.
Have you spoken to her, Mort?
No, no, I haven't seen any. I only see Sharon. I'm sheltered at home. I've never seen so many faces.
Like you could reach out through an email, do you think? Because I think I might have her email. I vaguely know her, but.
You would like for me to reach out to her or Mort?
I don't know. Or, I mean, I was thinking myself. I, I don't.
Oh, sure.
You know, um, I mean, I do, I do know enough to wave and say hi when I'm passing. Um, and I think I still have her email address from being a parent at Wes. Um, I mean, we might as well just try, right?
Right.
We can ask, you want me to reach out, Mary Beth, or like, who, you think it's better for me to reach out?
Why don't we both reach out?
Okay.
I should have her, I could get her, um, email address out of our Aspen.
All right.
Nation Management System.
You probably can't share it with me, though, so I should see if I have it. If I don't have it, perhaps I'll email you, asking you to forward something along so that.
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else on that topic? Okay. Okeydoke. Um, anything for the Cape Cod Collaborative, Jill?
Yes, there was a Zoom meeting on April eighth. Uh, there was an executive contract discussion, executive session, contract discussion for non-union personnel. Um, of course, there was some talk about distance learning and how challenging it is for the staff, as well as the students of the collaborative, because especially for the level and needs of these students, uh, there's a lot of hands-on learning, if not all hands-on learning. And that's been a big challenge, uh, for staff, as well as the therapies. I mean, these are students that get a whole stellar amount of therapies. So that's been a real tough one. Um, waypoint relocation, um, has been on hold, of course, because the Sandwich Town Meeting keeps getting postponed, and that's a good thing. Uh, so right now, it looks like the, uh, waypoint will have, at least through December twenty-twenty-one, a place to be. Um, the executive director evaluation, finalization, uh, feedback, uh, we should have tomorrow. There's a meeting tomorrow. Um, the ASLP program, the Advanced Leadership Program at the Mass Maritime, will have, uh, will not go on, obviously, for, you know, housing and crowds and people and all that. So it's being explored momentarily for the students that got chosen for this program. Of course, another big disappointment, but it is being investigated what sort of special things could possibly happen over the summer for these students that were already selected. And of course, there's going to be adjustments to the spending plan and the budget, um, for money not spent in some areas where money is spent. So again, there's a meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Um, preschool enrollment? Okay. Uh, PTA, I have not heard a word from PTA. Mary Beth, anything to add there?
Nothing now.
Imagine there's nothing right now. Um, Strategic Plan Committee, Martha, anything to add to, um, what Tom was speaking about before?
Yeah. Um, we did meet, um, I don't remember, I can't even tell what month it is right now, but, um, we met, um, a couple of days ago, I think last Friday. And we, first, we were talking about the fact that we really should probably have something in place in the strategic plan. Um, our draft is ready. I mean, it's, we're, we're pretty much done with the strategic plan. So the idea of going back and putting something in about distance learning, it is in certain parts of the strategic plan, certainly in community schools, um, global education, but not in, in it as a separate important thing. And going on in the future, we felt that we should be ready if this happens again, or when it happens again, or anything like this happens, we should be ready to, um, be able to, you know, leap into place running with it. So that was our thought. Um, first, we thought we would add it as an appendix, rather than go back into that plan and rewrite and do anymore with the editing, because there are about, I would say, there are seven very active people on that committee right now, and, um, editing sessions were fraught. So, um, we all agreed we'd rather not do it that way. Then we decided, after talking on Friday during that conversation, it occurred to us that maybe we should wait. Um, and Tom's goal, Tom mentioned that one of his goals is to do a thorough assessment of what has happened here with distance learning, use that information, but also, um, survey parents, staff members, administration, and students about how they think it went. And then go forward, as we said, the strategic plan is a fluid plan. It's not going to be something that stays the same for five years. And our hope is to revisit it every year and make changes as we have to have, it's living, and we want to keep it living. So we thought we would spend, spend, um, the summer, but mostly next year, beginning part of the year, getting information from people on how they think it went. And then, um, work it into, um, by next spring, work it into an addition for our strategic plan in, in a way that's, uh, more clearly considered, thought out. So that's where we are. So I, I, we did draft a letter to Tom. Um, I believe he received it to that effect. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. So that's where we are right now.
They lost their best editor.
Thank you, Mort.
Thank you, Martha. That sounds very well thought out, you know? It sounds like a good plan for moving forward.
Thank you.
Um, we are on Substance Abuse Mental Health Task Force. That's you, Martha, nothing to report. Uh, Policy Subcommittee, there is nothing to report. Am I correct in saying that? Anne? Nothing. Uh, Wellness Committee, nothing. And Future Agenda Items? No one has anything to add? Yes, Martha?
Yes, she does.
I, I would like to put communication on the agenda for next time, I think.
Could you kind of clarify what you mean by that? Just because I think we had a misunderstanding.
Um, yes. I, there were a couple of times during the past month where I felt that I wasn't getting information, not from, not from Mary Beth at all, but I was at a planning meeting about something entirely different. And somebody said, I just learned that, um, this morning, that, um, it was later in the afternoon, I just learned that, um, Governor Baker has decided to close schools until June. And Martha, you're on the school committee. What do you know about that? And I knew nothing about it, mostly because I hadn't been, I'm, I'm trying to stay away from the news as much as possible, and I was running groups all day. Um, so I, I hadn't really gotten the information. So I quickly went online. It was a Zoom meeting, so I, I switched screens and went online to see if there was anything in my email or anything on the school website, and there wasn't. So I, I really had wished that I had gotten that information. Um, it's, it's more, and it's also about communication among us on the school committee, too. Um, I just, I think we need to work on it. I guess that's what I mean. I know, Tom, that you certainly tried to get everything out as soon as you can. And, um, it just happened instantaneously, and I just wanted to say I felt like the village idiot at that point.
I'm sorry for that.
That's not, you know, everything's changing, as you said, so fast. It's certainly understandable.
Jan?
I would like to suggest that we continue to have these kinds of meetings, um, even though they're not as satisfactory as personal and so forth. But by having this, I feel at least a little bit closer to our parents and students. And, um, I think hearing Mary Beth and Tom is helpful. So even though, you know, like, we didn't meet in April, um, but I think we should go back to at least the next couple of months, having meetings and finding out what's gonna happen with summer school and. having meetings and finding out what's gonna happen with summer school and all that sort of thing, whereas we might not have met in, you know, the summer. So we don't usually. So I, I really think it's important that we do, for our, find out what's going on. I guess that's communications.
Okay. Mary Beth?
I just wanted to see if we could please add our budget plan for money that is left for FY '20, and if you would allow Giovanna and I to work on how we could utilize the funding that has remained. Please.
Okay, so that will go on the June agenda?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I just want to, just one second, Martha. I, I just want to address Jan's comment about summer meetings. I'm feeling very similarly, that so much is going on, that I think it would be helpful for us to kind of just keep up on things, especially with, you know, Phase 4 plans for opening, or what's going on with summer school. So unless there is a real hardship, because I do understand the amount of meetings that, Tom, I don't have probably a quarter of your meetings, and I am stressed out by what I do. But if you could fit us in, and we could make that, I think, I think it would be, it would be advisable in this kind of time.
Sure, I, I would agree completely. I mean, the, the work that needs to be done and understood by the board is critical. And we're in a whole nother period of education right now. And so absolutely, I mean, it's, I think it's, it's gonna be very helpful for the board. It's gonna be helpful for the district to understand what everyone's doing. So, yep, I'm aboard.
Okay, great. And thank you, Jan, for that. That was, that was timely. Martha?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to say, I, I didn't say it earlier, and I do wanna thank Tom and Mary Beth and the whole staff for everything they're doing. And Tom, I, I understand why that happened. It was just a matter of poor timing. But just, I wanna say that you guys have been doing an amazing job. It's, I'm, I'm breathless just thinking about it. I also would like to say that I think in terms of meeting, we should, maybe, since none of us are really running off to work or having really heavily scheduled days, that we should try to make whatever meetings we have going forward as convenient as we can for Mary Beth and Tom in terms of schedule. If we, as a committee, could be more flexible in terms of when we meet, that might be helpful.
That's very nice. Thank you.
I have a question. How do we do this and not be violating the open meeting law? How do parents or community members want to know what we're doing? I don't know how we do that.
Courtney can speak to that.
Yeah, so really, the, the open meeting law hasn't changed. The only real requirement is that the meetings be accessible to the public and that they be recorded in full. So by having this Zoom meeting, it was posted on the town's website. The meeting access was there, and it is recording now. So as soon as this finishes, the conversion, the download will be put onto the town website. So, yeah, you're all complying. You're good.
Good.
So on a number of meetings, we've had people speak and citizens speak. And so we've had some, we've had a number of involvement by citizens in different meetings, so.
Great.
Okay. I'm sorry, Martha, that I'm having trouble with this, but I need to go back to future agenda items communications. So are you thinking of that's gonna be like an A, B, C, or D? Do you think of it like reports? Because I feel like if we are going to have summer meetings, and we're going to be getting reports from Mary Beth and Tom, I need to know how this agenda item's different, just for my own self, wrapping my brain around it. So I gotta dig in a little bit and ask you to say a little bit more about communications as an agenda item.
Okay, it's, more than anything, I think it's, I feel that I don't, you know what? Why don't we put it off till things get normal? Because I think we'll have so many other things to talk about over the next few months. I really do. Why don't we wait till the fall and have that, and I'll talk to you privately about what I meant.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's just when I work with Tom on the agenda, I'm, I'm just not sure where I'm going with that yet. I mean, I understand the problem that you had, and I, I do feel badly about that, but I'm not sure going forward, like, I guess I just don't get.
It's more about how we're doing as a committee, how we're communicating.
Well, so we were gonna do an evaluation. We're gonna do a self-evaluation. So, all right, so what, well, let's put that, maybe we need to talk about self-evaluation during one of our summer meetings or something.
Or in the fall.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Martha. I'm sorry to keep.
Not a problem.
Being in there. Courtney?
Yeah, just really quick, if there are communications from the governor that are coming down about anything, or any other communications that you think would be good notice for the town to have, I'd be glad to put it on the town website. So please, Tom or Mary Beth, please send me anything that you see that should go on the town's website. I, I have been trying to keep track of all of his orders, but I don't, I, I do not think that the school one got on there. But anything else you see in the future, please send to me. I'll put it up.
Thank you, Courtney.
He typically kicks it to the Commissioner of Education. So that's where we're getting the directive from. And they play the game of like, I can't quite tell you, in 10 minutes, you'll be.
And we get weekly, a weekly report from the desktop of the commissioner. And so we got one yesterday, and it referenced a parent letter that went out on May 8th. So all of the elementary principals, we were scouring the DESI website. There is not a parent letter there. Last one, it was April 24th.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna move past our future agenda item, and something to add?
Yes. So Tom asked me to keep the meeting schedule going forward as we have it now. So I've prepared next year, June, July, August, right, you know, through next year. Same time, same second Tuesday. Is that agreeable still, or do you want to look at something different?
That is agreeable to me. Maybe you can show your thumb in your box if, if you can do that time.
Okay.
Oh, Martha, text that.
She's.
Thank you. That works. So approval of minutes, then? Yes, Mary Beth?
I just had one correction in mind, under Playground Forum, Anne, the second paragraph. And it is the third sentence. It says Nancy White sent regulations for sand that she recommends. If you could change that to Nancy White does not recommend sand. Thank you.
Any other additions to the minutes? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
Good. And adjournment, do I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
But we didn't vote the minutes, did we?
All in favor of the ways and wiggle your fingers. All in favor, oh, we didn't get a, a second on the motion for adjournment. A second. Great, all in favor?
Maybe no one wants to adjourn.
I could stay here all night with you guys. This is a ball. I have a meeting at 6:00. All right, everybody. Thank you.